Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who are signed in by 7:10 by submitting a blue card to the board secretary, may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There's a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board.
And if I could just, another reminder that we are doing interpretive services, so speak slowly and clearly to help those providers.
Jackson Wagner from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about book banning.
In 1822, the Jewish poet Heinrich Heine wrote, "Where they burn books, they will in the end burn human beings too." Over a century later, his books were burned by the Nazis. It is no coincidence that a wave of anti-LGBT rhetoric, legislation, and book bans have preceded a rise in hate crimes against LGBT people. Men like Governor DeSantis of Florida have openly imitated Putin by pushing through anti-LGBT legislation applying in public schools. A wave of book bans has been spread, first in Florida and now across the country, by an anti-LGBT hate group called Moms for Liberty. Last month, five people were murdered in a hate crime at an LGBT-plus nightclub in Colorado Springs. On November 30th, five days ago, the Department of Homeland Security warned that there's a heightened threat of domestic terrorism against LGBT people. This rise in targeted violence was incited by people like Ron DeSantis and Tucker Carlson. Many of the same tropes that fomented that violence were repeated on signs I saw all around me at the October 10th meeting before it was canceled. Every time I speak here, I gamble with my life. Every time I hold a man's hand in public, I gamble with my life. Every time I take joy in being who I am in public, or feel catharsis from speaking truth to power here, I run the risk of winning the Powerball of death, of being murdered just for being gay. But I still fight. I fight for parents who fear their children will be targeted in school if they speak out against book bans. I fight for students who fear what their parents will do to them if they speak out here. I fight for librarians who are being pressured by administrators to just ban something, to appease an angry mob. I fight for everyone who no longer feels safe at these meetings because of the moral cowardice of this board. I fight to remind this school board that "students first" means that the well-being of students comes before parental rights. Do all my allies watching from home help me build an LGBT Resource Center here in Dearborn? Help me start the first pride parade in the city's history? Tell your state legislators to pass protections against censorship? Reach out to the ACLU. If the board won't protect LGBT youth from an angry mob, we'll do it without them.
Next, Cliff Alawi from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about books. Cliff Alawi? You don't want to speak? Okay. Next, Mr. Hassan Ayun. Mr. Ayun, when you come, can you... you didn't fill out what city. Can you just state which city for us? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Mr. Berry, do I... me and you are on Facebook? Can you please start the three minutes?
Address the chair, please.
Okay, Mr. Berry's on my Facebook. I gave him this letter right here. He indicated today about the fire marshal that nobody called the fire marshal. A FOIA request was made. Ms. Roxanne, you addressed a gentleman to come over here to speak on the mic. You opened the mic for him. I just want to know, why was that? Who is in charge of the school board? The gentleman? You? Who? That's my question. Who is the person that said they called 911? For the overcapacity. It says right here, does not exist. Under 15.231 has amended. Does anybody know? You caused the chaos in here. Because of you, this started. I asked you where the capacity was. You didn't tell me where the capacity was. How much the capacity was. After public comment, you wanted to tell us as a fire hazarders. It claims right here, the police were not called for overcapacity. The fire marshal was not called. Who is going to be responsible for this right here? If a student called, made a false call, would they get arrested? Yes, they would. You made false accusations on Channel 4 saying, "We're closing this meeting because it's a fire hazard." Did the fire marshal call? It's right here. It's right here, from Dearborn Police. And who? Corporal King. FOIA request. I got the body cam, too. If you guys want to see the body cam, I'll produce a body cam to you. Can somebody answer who is going to get charged for making false accusations? That's what I want to know. Who's the person that's going to get charged with a crime? You guys caused the chaos for the public. If it wasn't for you guys addressing somebody else to speak and opening the mic, this would never have happened. Does anybody else get special treatment? Does the person work here that addressed the board? No. If one of you board members addressed it, maybe this one have never happened. If you have brung the capacity and showed us from the beginning of the meeting. I'm not understanding. Who is going to be held responsible? That's all I want to know, Roxanne. Who is going to be held responsible for this? It's right there, black and white.
Next.
My three minutes are up.
Next, Stephanie Butler would like to come to speak to the board about books.
Okay, so as you can see, there's some pretty uncomfortable posters on either side of me. And this was done for a reason. And if you guys can't look at it, if the camera can't look at it, tell me why you voted to keep "This Book is Gay" on the shelves. Here is a piece from "This Book is Gay." Here is a piece from "This Book is Gay." Honest to God, sit there and look at these posters and tell me that this book belongs on the shelf. Honestly. Common sense. So, you know, I don't like reading, read last time, but since we voted to keep this book, I'm going to read from this book. Blowies. Oral sex is popping another dude's penis in your mouth, or indeed popping yours in his. There is only one hard and fast rule when it comes to blowjobs. Watch the teeth. Lip and tongue, yes. Teeth, no. As with hand jobs and breakfast eggs, all men like their blowjobs served in different ways. The term "blowjob" is massively misleading as you won't actually be blowing on his penis. Please turn my microphone on. It's off.
It's on.
You won't actually be blowing on his penis. It's more about sucking. Can I...
It's on.
It's not working.
It's on.
Okay. It's more about sucking, although I stress you're not trying to suck his kidneys out through his urethra. It's more about sliding your mouth up and down the shaft of his cock. Letting a guy cum in your mouth is a safe sex no-no. Get away from the volcano before it erupts. Bumming. It is a universal truth that many men like sticking their willies inside things. I suspect it must be biological. While in the absence of a vagina, gay and bi men make excellent use of the back door. Want to know a secret? Straight people have anal sex all the time, too. Straight men like stuff up their bums just as much as gay ones. Why? As mentioned before, the prostate gland located just up your bum feels amazing when massaged. Lots of men, gayer straight, like how this feels. Anal sex isn't a gay thing. Still, unlike vaginal sex, a little more thought has to go into anal sex, and here's why. And then it goes into talking about lube and all these other things. As uncomfortable it is for me to stand here and read this, and as uncomfortable as I see your faces, tell me why this book belongs. It is a sex manual. This book would not have helped this gentleman back here with the incident that he talked about last time. This book is a guide teaching you. It has nothing to do with anything else except for how to. How to. Why? Why did we vote to keep this book on? Please, somebody. How is this representing the LGBT youth community? Do they want to be represented as a...
Thank you. Next.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike Hashem would like to come to speak to the board about books.
Good evening, board members. Mike Hashem here. There's two things I want to start off with. We talked about a citizen earlier that this body addressed that sort of what I feel was thrown under the bus, basically, by this whole board. From what I seen, and obviously what the cameras seen, and there's body cam footage, this person was approached to calm the crowd down. This person came to you, Ms. Roxanne, along with another Dearborn Public School employee, and got the green light from you to go ahead and address the crowd. And on top of that, his microphone was turned on. So that tells me, why are we trying to throw the blame on others when this board up here should be the one to carry the full responsibility of the actions of that day? First of all, there was nothing that was preventing this body from doing its normal business. You guys knew there was going to be a large capacity. We all have WhatsApp, we all have Facebook. And obviously, the Dearborn Public Schools, they have enough intelligence out there to know what's going on in the community. The second thing I want to point out is about the LGBT community. This is not about the LGBT community, as some are trying to portray. Us Muslims, especially in Dearborn, we respect everyone in this country. Whoever is going to stand up here and say that we're harassing the LGBTQ community, well, guess what? You have Muslims that are gay. Do you see Muslims harassing gay Muslims? Absolutely not. Not in this town. And if we're going to sit here and portray that, let me tell you. You have law enforcement that's capable of going and taking action. And with all the love that we have for our brothers and sisters in the LGBT community, that should never be an excuse. If they have anything, I will personally protect them. But one thing is, the same respect we give others is the respect that the Muslim community should earn in this country and in the city. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Hassan Nemi would like to come to speak to the board. Next, Khalil Atman would like to come to speak to the board from Dearborn about books.
Hello, good evening. I just want to address one thing related to the process and the guidelines. I'm looking at your website and the guidelines in here. This is the process that you guys posted online for reviewing or selecting the books. And one of the points that you guys highlighted is similar to the other points, the educational significance for each of these books that are being reviewed. And to me, we keep coming to the meetings, month after month, but we not getting any answers. Some of the parents ask for a town hall. At least we will have respectful discussions to see where you guys are coming from, what are, like, the process, the thinking that you guys have to remove or keep these books. But apparently, we are being forced to follow this process, which is fine. As a parent, I want to know, what is the edu... at least a fair request, what is the educational significance from all these books that you elect to keep on the shelves? There were about 10 or 12 challenged books. You guys removed three, and you kept nine. So, at least for the nine, based on the media specialist reviews, can you provide what is the educational significance for each of these books? At least we can see what process or what review they went through, why they were convinced these books should stay on the shelves for our students. Thank you.
Next, Abdul Nasser would like to come to speak to the board about books. When you come, can you let us know what city you're from, please? Okay, thank you.
Hi, John. Last month, I requested from Mr. Berry the review process of the criteria for the book selection, and he sent it to me, thank you. I'm looking for the section where it says, "Specific criteria for material selections." What I'm seeing here for those is just a pull-up points. It's like one word. Readability, clear presentation and format, educational significance, need and value to the collection, accuracy, permanent value. The question I'm asking, this cannot be a guideline. If you work for a boss that knows his job, he will fire the guy who wrote this process. Because I can't, I can't just go, okay, clear presentation and format. Explain what that to me. If your process doesn't have those content, then how we can know exactly what we're dealing with? If I'm looking for the need and the value to the collection, and there is no explanation of what you guys mean by this. I'm an engineer, so I, you know, I do, you know, I do expect to read this and then understand what you guys mean. But I don't know what you guys talking about here. It's just a pull-up point. Someone just, like, spent 10 minutes and just wrote these points. Is there, is there, is there any checklist those books go through? Like, if you see readability, there has to be a checklist. Is, how you define this criteria, this section? Readability, 1, 2, 3, 4. But I don't see this. That's why we're coming here all the time. They went through 11 books or 12 books, and they said three of them are, will be banned, and the rest will be, you know, back to the shelves. But the question is, based on what? I'm, as a parent, don't know what is a process. You guys kept telling us, "There is a process, a process, a process. You guys approved it, and some other district will use it." But there is actually no process. I come back, this is my third time speaking, and I'm talking the same point. It's like, okay, there is a process. But is this the process that you guys talk about, or there is another process? If this is a process, this cannot be a process. This cannot be a process that we use to decide what book goes and what our kids will be taught every, you know, in their schools. Plus, there is another thing that's, you know, I know, I know, I know my time is, I know the last month, there is a third grader, like, you know, on third grade in McDonald's School, a teacher gave a book, is it gay, to third grade students to write a summary about it. And then I don't know if, I'm pretty sure you guys know about it, but no one has, no one has said a word about it.
Next speaker will be Marian Mortada from Dearborn. She wants to speak on the agenda behind sexually explicit books in public schools.
Hello. I'm a grandmother. I want to talk about the bigger picture here. The bigger picture here is that the World Economic Forum supports the LGBTQ community. And the LGBTQ community should wonder why the World Economic Forum supports them. And the World Economic Forum also supports the Education International, pushing teachers' unions into the Fourth Industrial Revolution. For nearly 100 years, the American Federation of Teachers and the National Education Association, the two largest teachers' unions in the United States, have cozied up to corporate foundations such as the Rockefeller Philanthropies and the Bill and Belinda Gates Foundation, along with multinational technology companies, including IBM and Microsoft. After almost a century of cutting side deals with Robert Behrens and Tech Behrens alike, the AFT and the NEA are now parroting the Gates Foundation's Reimagine Education campaign, which is being buoyed by the World Economic Forum and the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, UNESCO. Altogether, the AFT, the NEA, the WF, the UNESCO, are all reimagining a new post-human education system as they simultaneously push for ed-tech overhauls, as documented in my investigation series, Teach No Crossy. These overhauls seek to privatize public schools through their partnerships with big tech corporations that facilitate online distance learning to accommodate indefinite classroom health restrictions in a post-COVID world. In fact, the AFT and the NEA are tethered to the WF and UNESCO through an entity known as Education International. EI is a global union federation, GUF, that combines 383 member organizations, including the AFT and the NEA, and collaborates with the WEF and UNESCO as the intermediary between America's teachers' unions and the WEF and UNESCO. EI has been galvanizing the AFT and the NEA into conformity with the reimagined ed-tech agendas of these global governance institutions. Now, I'm not going to read any further from this, but I think people should be very concerned about how corporations and world organizations such as the WEF are taking over our educations. And I'm pretty sure that these books are connected to this. And we should be looking into this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next, Dennis Duggan from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about appreciation, support, and declaration of trust in the Dearborn Board of Education.
Thank you, board, for the time before you. I was here at that October meeting, and I had come early enough because I have to have a seat. I had, I'm old enough to have had polio, so my spirit is young, but my legs are 75 years old with polio problems. So, I'm just going to start right there with a moment of gratitude because in the midst of my theological degree, looking up at those signs and saying, "Oh, God is being misused again." I dislike when God is so misused to clout other people, and there was a lot of it there. But those same folks, when all of the chaos started, and I was falling, and people reached out their arms, their hands, their shoulders, and everything, they got me. So, I say, "Thank you. If you were here and helped me out, or you're home and you helped me out, that was terrific." Now, I'm going to speak in a little bit of metaphor, so I drive right-brain people crazy. So, here I go. I'm 75. My sister that I love is 73. She won't talk to me right now. And it, it's troubling. And so I give it a lot of thought to it. It, she sees the world as a 25-piece puzzle. She was a police officer, and she's very precise and very noted. She sees it very simple. It's this, or it's that. I'm a philosopher. I have theology degrees. I see many questions, much gray, much more gray than I do black and white. I want to affirm this board for the fact that you're taking the noble road of pulling this discussion up higher. My sister is, she's not a fanatic. I won't call her a noun. She's not a noun, but she's fanatical. And if I can say that of my sisters, I can also say that of my neighbors. There's some fanatical things going on here. Not noun, just activity. And I just say, I think the board has gone to the cutting edge of the question. You've accepted the challenge. You're willing to work with it reasonably and rationally, and I applaud you for it. The world doesn't have enough trust. I trust you, and I want you to know that. I trust you. Thank you.
Next. Jane Maza would like to come to speak, from Dearborn, would like to come to speak to the board about, "Thank you to staff."
Good evening, school board. President Roxanne McDonald, Joanne Harrison, Dr. Milanko. Jane Maza, Dearborn Federation of Teachers President. I just wanted to get up once more and thank all of our hard-working staff. I appreciate the extra time and support that the staff has given all of our students at Dearborn High, excuse me, Dearborn Public Schools, Dearborn High, Etzel, Fortson, and Michael Berry. Can't leave any of them out. And all their feeders. It's important, though, for us to remember that as a public school, we teach all students. And our staff makes sure that each and every student feels supported and safe in our schools. And that is one of our most important missions that we need to do every day. So at this time, I'd like to hope that we all have a wonderful New Year, that it brings us all happy and healthy events for 2023. And I want to thank the board for the work they've done, too. Good night.
I have two additional blue cards, and I will read from them. Nasser Alawari from Dearborn. He just said, "I do not wish to speak to the board, but just would like the following comment. He would just like a copy of the budget sent to his email." And lastly, Hussein Gulan would not like to, would, does not wish to speak to the board, but he has a statement that I will read. My name is Hussein Gulan. Like any other city or state in America, the school board and the mayor have the authority to make decisions. Our city of Dearborn is 90% Muslim and conservative in terms of values and morals. So, we, so respect for the Dearborn families and make firm decisions to remove sexually explicit or violent content books from our schools. I am following the majority of city leader in America, as well as the majority of city residents for all different communities. And their position was clear and explicit that they were against homosexual books and made, I'm sorry, I can't read it. Something, decisions not to be in schools. School board member B here today, make decision, remove the dirty book from school. Thank you. Next, action items. Oh, I'm sorry, board follow-up.
On board follow-up, we heard a couple of parents question the process. And the process was written more through the lens of the media specialists and our staff and their expertise. They go to college to study this art of libraries. And so, it might not be really readily understandable to the layperson as to what the full definition is for what each of those bullet points represent. Possibly, we may want to consider having a media specialist come with a book selection to present to the board how they go about the process, using the process with an example to help clarify for our parents as to how the process actually works when they aren't embedded in that process through their educational background. Trustee Berry?
The words "voted" and "elected" the books came up earlier today. So I want to clarify, we do not vote on books. We do not elect books. We're policymakers when it comes to an issue like that. We do vote on spending money. We do vote on hiring and evaluating. But we do not vote on books. We do vote on hiring and evaluating, but we do not vote on books. Okay? To follow up on Trustee Pachkov's comments, yes, the process, and I've mentioned this before to a couple constituents, is work in progress. It's an early stage. I, I, I did not read the guidelines. I promise I will visit the guidelines. And if we have to make some adjustments, I will make recommendation to the administration. Dr. Milenko, educational purpose of a book came up. Is that part of the process when the librarians are?
Yeah, that would be, it's in the definition. I can't remember the exact wording, Mr. Martin, but it's that title. I think it's like educational. I don't want to speak, I don't have it in front of me.
You don't have to speak now. I just, I mean, let's follow up and see if that is. Because obviously, this is something we're going to pay attention. And the last comment I have is, you know, not tonight, but a lot of times I'm hearing that we're here for the children. We're here for the children. We're here for the children. Comment I want to make is, words matter, and words can be very, very hurtful. So just be careful with your words because you're affecting our students. You're hurting our students. I've been hearing from students and parents and coaches that it is getting down to them what's happening, what's being said in school board meetings. And it's not good for them, A. And B, students bullying other students, same thing. It's starting here. So that needs to stop. If you really truly are for the children, just watch what you say. Words do matter. The bullying, you know, we have to follow up on some more reports, but it's getting to the point where it's getting physical between students. Please, 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 if you really truly are here for the children, which I believe you are, just be careful with the words you use. Thank you.
Trustee Thorpe?
I'll just use slightly different words than what Trustee Barry said about voting. One of our main duties is to create or manage policies. And none of those policies are written in stone. We have the ability. We can make changes on a policy anytime we see fit. And quite often, when we're looking through our policy manuals, we're dealing with policies that have been on the boards for 30, 40, 50 years and might have had six, seven different amendments that we've changed as time has gone on. So just know that everything that, that we've set in a policy is not written in stone. We have the ability. We can continue to adjust it for what makes the most sense for our community at any given time.
Next item, please.
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
I would like to add something, but I'd have to have a support on it as well. We'd like to, I'd like to move that the Board of Education approve an RFP for the energy bond, the one that was discussed here tonight, and it should have been on the.
So are you making the motion?
I am making the motion.
I'd support it.
Okay. Well, if it's done that way.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what was said. Can you repeat that?
Yes, it's just a motion to put out the RFP for the energy bond that was discussed here earlier. Now, that might be confusing.
That's a standing standalone motion then.
Right, that's.
So you've put it out. It's been seconded.
Okay, we'll vote on that one.
We have to vote on that one.
Just that, that one. May I have a roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, first for discussion for that.
Yes, for discussion, yes.
Do we need anything written for us to look at before we put out that RFP? Is that something that would be needed?
Normally. No, yeah.
Okay.
And the decision will actually be made whether to accept or not in February when it comes vetted back.
And we'll see then.
Correct. This is just the approval to go out on the, out to the public and provide an RFP for services regarding the energy bond.
This is a vote to approve the process of creating an RFP.
Yes.
Creating and releasing.
Trustee Barry?
Mr. Wallace finished the word. In the, in the report, it says next steps. Board vote to release RFP, so that's what we're voting.
That's what we're doing. It wasn't on the action item.
No, I get that. I'm just saying, yeah, just.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? May I have a roll call on that particular item?
I guess, are we roll-calling on just this?
Just that piece, yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Pachkov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President McDonald?
Yes. Okay, now, onto action items.
So are there any agenda items on this agenda that we, which the board members or superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately?
Seeing none.
Okay. Recommended action, move that action items numbered 1 through 12 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion by Trustee Thorpe, supported by Trustee Pachkov. May I have a roll call? Oh, I'm sorry.
I got a question.
Certainly. On which item?
It's multiple items, change orders. I mean, you know, every time you put them out here, one of us asks you about that. Is, is any of the change orders due to inflation? What's going on with the economy?
Typically, typically, when we have a staff shortage in a certain area, we don't have the time necessarily to hire someone immediately to fill like a social worker, physical therapy, and through that process. So we go out and do a small blanket purchase order of $20,000 to get someone in place to meet our requirements for special-ed children to meet their IEP. So that's why usually when we start the process, we go through a contract with them, sign a contract. And then, once that person starts and we can't go and find anybody in the public to fill that position, then we're coming back to the board to amend it to make sure we can maintain those services. Does not mean we're going to hit that threshold as we continue to look, but gives us the, the time and effort to make sure we can still provide those services to that student.
Thank you. And you know what I'm doing. People looking at the agenda online, probably thinking, what's going on here? So thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Again, we have a motion by Trustee Thorpe, seconded by Trustee Pachkov. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Pachkov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President McDonald?
Yes.
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to Kami. Number three to six, approval of change orders. Number seven through 10, approval of non-instruction and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 11, approve a financial statement, and number 12, approval of donations.
Can I ask the audience to be quiet, please? Continue, please.
Uh, next item, discussion item, there are none.
Next item?
Next, Board of Education Business acknowledgements of correspondence.
We had, we had a lot of emails back and forth from the community, again, mostly with the, the book concerns and also on, on both sides of that, that argument. Anyone else? Next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
I think we had a.
We had policy earlier today. Two of the policies that we were discussing, the first one was graduation requirement. This was something that was a discussion back in 2018 that Ms. Peterson had brought up. The change would be to have a requirement beginning with the class of 2023, and they have been aware of the changes, that they would be required to have 23 credits to walk, as well as 23 credits to graduate. And that was something that during COVID was a little bit more lax. The other thing was a discussion about the athletic eligibility and whether or not we would want to revisit the current eligibility as a 2.0 GPA. And there was a couple of concerns about how there's incomplete data when it comes to a high school student's GPA based on whether or not they take summer classes and also about the, the standard-based grading. So the policy had asked for a couple more examples of what districts are doing around the area. But we did have a discussion about perhaps trying to find a medium position between where MS, MHSAA currently has and what the district has to perhaps accommodate some of the COVID, post-COVID, in the middle of COVID circumstances. So current MHSAA, their rule is that you are eligible to play if you are passing 2/3 of your classes. And again, Mr. Martin said he would go back and give us a little bit more data and that we would probably present that to the full board so that we could have a, perhaps a discussion as to what would be best for students on an individual basis versus a broad stroke of a 2.0, especially with incomplete GPA grades. So for instance, in the summertime, if they were to take a class, they would get a G for passing and an N if they didn't pass, but that didn't factor into their GPA. So how do we kind of shore that up and so that we can have a complete viewpoint as to what their GPA actually is? We had looked at a couple other of policies that we had just tweaked. So you'll probably have it passed around. Mr. Mustafa will probably email it to you. Some of the wording in terms of, I'll have to pull it out. Trustee Thorpe, let me know if you remember. But some of them were just a couple of the wordings in terms of public board of expression and updating the verbiage so that before it said just local media. And I think that's kind of antiquated speak, just updating it so that media is no longer just your local news media and your, the press and guide. So just updating some of the words on that bylaw. And then we did talk about the parent resolution, and we'll be asking Mr. Sutton to come up with some suggestions for that. And we would be, we'll also get some updated guidelines in regards to mascots and reviewing the process for naming buildings. So just cleaning that up a little bit as well and revisiting and making sure that that is up to date. There was a couple of bylaws that we were looking at, and we thought it would probably be best to ask Jay for our study session for his kind of opinion as to, I think, one of the bylaws that you had mentioned, 0152, where the election of officers, if somebody were to step down. No, I'm sorry, that wasn't it. It was the, the one paragraph about the verbiage, the second round of voting. So a couple of things that we weren't quite sure, that we thought, well, Jay would be here next Monday, that we would probably just ask his opinion as to kind of clean it up and give us some examples as to what that would look like. Trustee D'Ambrogio, Trustee Thorpe, what did I miss?
I would just say that Jay, for those that don't know, refers to a member of the Michigan Association of School Boards who will be here with us next week. And Kevin is an attorney who works with the district and helps us out on many different items.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Was there any other committee meetings? Next item, please.
Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee Barry, please.
Okay, get some water. All right, thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the voters of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights for their vote of confidence for me for another 60 years and my colleague here. If he wants to say something, he can. But just very, very thankful. Happy birthday to our colleagues. Wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Let's everybody take a little time out and breathe during the season, the holiday season, and just relax. And we'll be back here in January. Thank you.
I'm just going to piggyback off them and thank all the community for voting for me and have confidence in me. And again, thank you and have a great holiday.
Trustee Thorpe?
As has been already stated, we're in the closing couple of weeks of 2022. This is a great time to get to the schools throughout the district, see what the students have been working on. They're getting a chance to present things, whether it's through concerts. A lot of the fall plays have already happened. They've got their artwork up. But it's a more relaxed and chill type of atmosphere. So get a chance to get into the building and see what the students are working on. Thanks.
Trustee Watts?
I just wanted to wish everybody a happy two weeks of vacation for the students, but also to all of our family who may be traveling to have safe travels. I know years ago, and it seems more prevalent that we are having more and more car accidents and fatalities. So I, I just hope that everybody is safe this, this holiday season.
I just want to add one thing. This is considered the season of giving. And although not everyone is in the financial position to give anything of like monetary value, we all are in the position to give a little kindness. And I think that our community and our world needs more of that. So if you have the opportunity, whatever it may be, a little small act of kindness or love to a neighbor, to a stranger, to someone on the street, it goes a long way. So please, take a moment to be kind to one another.
Dr. Milenko?
I just want to mention, I'm not sure if this is your last meeting as DFT President Jane, but working, you know, there's disagreements at times, but it's always done in a very civilized manner. And so I wanted to thank you for working with, for your members, members. I served on the DFT Executive Board years ago, so understand that. And we look forward to also working with the new leadership once that's decided. Thank you. Oh, congratulations, Ms. Martin. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
And we'll acknowledge that for certain. Anyone else?
Next item, please.
Requests for information and/or future agenda items.
Trustee Barry?
Dr. Milenko, I was just wondering, are robotics programs back in action? Are they competing? I know there was.
There should be.
I think we have it in the, does Mason, we still have the robotics, robotics?
Robotics programs, are they back in place and competing?
There was a big.
I saw it on Channel 2 today. I'm thinking to myself, I used to enjoy getting those invites.
There, there was a big event at UNIS this weekend. So I saw some friends of mine from other areas of Metro Detroit posting about being in Dearborn.
I missed that one. Okay, the other thing is Virtual Academy. I'd like to see a report on numbers, because I know probably right now between semesters, I've had a couple of students ask for, I guess it's a borderline exemption to get back into their homeschools. So I'd like to see, I know we did a couple of things here to raise the numbers early in the year. So I just want to see what direction things are going.
So numbers on the virtual school?
Virtual school, yes. And the last thing I'm going to do, because eventually we're going to start talking about facilities and possibly going off for a bond, I implore this board to take some time. This is sort of like homework. Take some time and get to the high schools. Walk in the hallways, the main hallways between first, second, or second, third hour, and just, just, just feel what's going on over there. And the other thing, probably like about seven to eight minutes before school starts, drive by auto drive in Dearborn High. Drive down Rotunda, see what's going on at Atso Ford, because that's becoming a mess too. I don't even mention Fortson. Don't drive by Ford Road before school starts there. But you see where I'm going with this. Just get a feel. So when we have that discussion, at least we're, we all have the same information. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a request.
Oh, hold on. Trustee Thorpe?
I'd spoken to Dr. Milenko about this one at the end of last week, I think. I'd like some information on how we're doing as a district with job openings. We had the engineers in here before, and we know we've heard reports about there being a lack of engineers. Bus drivers is an ongoing issue. We know what's going on with the instructional side. So just where are we at right now? And depending on, on what we're hearing, perhaps a presentation about what we're doing to not just recruit, but also to retain the staff that we currently have. Thank you.
Trustee Moses?
Request on the dual enrollment numbers, especially that were post-COVID this year. Enrollment is up or down at 144.
Trustee Watts?
And I think, Dr. Milenko, I don't know if I, maybe I mentioned it, or maybe I dreamt it. I'm not quite sure. But a, a request to see what, I know our fiscal year, or calendar year is not done, but what our legal bill may look like from this coming school, this 2022 calendar year compared to years prior. Just to kind of get an idea of what we could expect for, I guess, next year.
Anyone else? I feel like I'm in a tennis match.
Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, December 12, 2022, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 5:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Room. Monday, December 12, 2022, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 6:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. Monday, December 12, 2022, P-12 Board of Education Study Session immediately following HFC Board of Trustee Meeting at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room.
Thank you all, and we are adjourned.
I don't know, wait, just for you, Jen, happy birthday?
Yes, happy birthday.